Okay, we're gonna open this meeting. Can everybody hear me? Yeah, okay. All right, this open meeting of the Town of Auburn Select Board is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in publicly accessible physical locations. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded to this so that the public can follow along with deliberations of the meeting. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, you can dial 1-408-650-3123 with access code 235235861. Or the public can join via computer at www.global.gotomeeting.com/join/23523581. All supporting materials have been provided to members of this body who are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. All right, I do see we have some public comments. For those residents that have signed up for public comments on 16 Perry Place, we're gonna hold that until the actual presentation comes up, just so your comments will be spoken at the appropriate time. Otherwise, we have Daniel Largess.
Good evening, Board. I was wondering if we have an update on the COVID money for the police and fire. I mean, we're talking $300,000 that could be distributed to the police and fire. And three weeks ago, I asked about it, and you had said you were working on something. Do we have an update?
I know that, not tonight, but through the Town Manager, I know that we were looking at other communities, what they did, how they came up with equitable solutions on where to give out these ARPA funds.
Between $1,000 and $4,500 per emergency personnel.
Understood. We're looking at other departments as well, and again, it's being worked on. We'll have an update probably in the next few meetings, but nothing's come back to us for review at this point in time. It hasn't been forgotten, I can assure you.
As I estimate, $3,000 per individual, they're looking at $300,000 out of 5 million? Was that what the total was, 5 million? How much COVID money the town got?
Yes.
Okay. I don't think that's a really bad number for those people. I mean, we had another fire at Dale Ave yesterday. Those guys are putting their life on the line every single day. We're sitting here right now, and they're probably doing something.
Absolutely, absolutely.
You know, hopefully, nothing ever happens to any of them, and I pray to God we never have another Tarantino situation. Those guys are there. You pick up the phone, they come.
Yep.
I wanna see them recognized.
Absolutely. Just keep watching the meetings. We will be addressing that at some point in the future.
I'll keep showing up for you.
Thanks, Dan.
I love your smile. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to public hearings and presentations, we have a presentation of a proclamation to R. Scott Roberts for heroic actions on July 31, 2022. Do you want to introduce it? Yeah. Chief Lemon, do you want to address this matter at all?
Sure. I know my deputy chief exercises. So, members of the Board, we're here tonight for an incident regarding an incident that happened in July. On behalf of the Auburn Police Department, I'm writing to express my sincere appreciation for your actions the morning of July 31, 2022, at the Shell Gas Station at 611 South Ridge Street. This letter is addressed to Mr. R. Scott Roberts of 502 Rochdale Street in Auburn, who's in the back of the room, probably. There he is, he raises his hand for us. Investigation by this department showed that your decision to intervene in the ongoing violent assault by a man upon two innocent female clerks likely prevented them from receiving even more serious injuries. During your interview with Detective Sergeant Lamaro, it was clear that you were concerned for your own safety and did not want to enter the store to get involved, but you did so anyways because, quote, "you wouldn't be able to sleep at night," end quote, if you did not. This selfish, community-minded mentality is the backbone of a peaceful society. The police cannot be everywhere, and it's incumbent upon all citizens to protect one another. Thank you for doing what you could do that morning to stop the attack from continuing. We also appreciate that you assisted the responding officers in accessing the store security footage. That timely assistance allowed the officers to quickly obtain invaluable identification information of the subject. For that, I thank you, Scott. I'd also like to recognize the two victims involved in this case, Tracy and Cassandra. While I'm thankful for Mr. Roberts for interrupting this incident, I also want to express my appreciation to Cassie and her mother, Tracy, the women who were at work very early that morning and subjected to and provoked violence. We have flowers for the women and hope that they are doing well in their recovery if So, Mr. Roberts, I have a civilian service award from the Auburn Police Department. I'd like to give you a patch. If you don't have a patch collection, it's a good time to start one, but I'm honored to give you this, and thank you very much for your service to the community.
And, Mr. Roberts, on behalf or in light of your heroic efforts, the Board of Selectmen has issued a proclamation. So whereas the Board of Selectmen wishes to recognize and acknowledge individuals who have served their community in a meritorious manner, and whereas Auburn resident R. Scott Roberts exhibited such service in a courageous manner on the morning of July 31, 2022, whereas R. Scott Roberts intervened in an ongoing assault by a man upon two female clerks at the Shell Gas Station at 611 South Ridge Street in Auburn, despite the risk to his personal safety, and whereas the Select Board believes it is important to recognize such outstanding bravery for all citizens to acknowledge and emulate. And now therefore, we, the Select Board of the Town of Auburn, Massachusetts, do hereby recognize and honor R. Scott Roberts and congratulate him for his heroic actions on Thank you, Chief. And we further have a presentation of proclamation to Tony Pellegrino to acknowledge his years of service as CERT leader.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. I'm honored to be here this evening to publicly recognize on behalf of the Town of Auburn and the Emergency Services, Dr. Tony Pellegrino. The timing of this recognition couldn't be better, a day after 9/11, as CERT teams across the United States were developed actually as a direct result of the tragedy of 9/11 in 2001, to have a citizen emergency response team be put into place. Dr. Pellegrino stepped up 21 years ago and has led the CERT team that entire time until he just recently retired from the position this past summer. So, Dr. Pellegrino, with just a little bit of arm twisting, is here this evening. He is a man who does not like the spotlight, he does not like the limelight. I told him, too bad for tonight, because he certainly deserves it. But he has diligently worked behind the scenes for many, many years, putting together and organizing a tremendous amount of volunteer citizens that perform admirably on our CERT team on an annual basis. So, Dr. Pellegrino, if you could come to the microphone. On behalf of the Town of Auburn, we would like to present Dr. Tony Pellegrino in recognition of your 20 years of outstanding leadership as CERT Director for the Town of Auburn on this day, September 12, 2022. Thank you very much, Doctor.
Further issued another proclamation, whereas the Auburn Select Board wishes to recognize and acknowledge individuals for their service to the community, and whereas Dr. Tony Pellegrino has been a longtime volunteer in the Town of Auburn as a member of the Community Emergency Response Team, CERT, and whereas the CERT program team members are trained to provide initial responses and treatment to their neighborhoods during emergencies like hurricanes, tornadoes, and have participated in the evacuation and sheltering of fire and flooding victims. And whereas Dr. Tony Pellegrino has been a CERT leader since 2007, now therefore, we, the Select Board of the Town of Auburn, Massachusetts, hereby recognize and honor Dr. Tony Pellegrino and congratulate him for his years of service as the Town CERT leader.
I'm stepping down as leader, and Kathy Stone's taking over, but I'm still gonna be a team member, so you're gonna still see me around the streets and that kind of thing. But I want to thank the Board for the recognition, I appreciate it. Also, what I want to do is thank the Police and Fire Departments. They are the ones that give us support and back us up and have taught us to do the job and do it right, so they should get the appreciation and recognition that they deserve for this as well. But most of all, the team members, there are about 30 team members who actually do the work, do the sweat and tears and everything else, and any kind of weather, and they're the ones who really need the recognition, and this all goes to them.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 3C, Presentation on Constitution Week by Deborah Nurse.
Good evening and thank you, Chairman Wren and members of the Board. My name is Deborah Nurse, and I am the Constitution Week Chairman of the Colonel Timothy Bigelow Chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution. Our chapter is named for Timothy Bigelow, who was born on Packagog Hill in what is now known as Auburn in 1739. In 1773, he was a member of the Committee of Correspondence. He was chosen as a commander of the Minutemen of Worcester. He marched at the Battle of Lexington and conquered and volunteered for the expedition to Quebec. It was on that expedition that he was captured by the British and was a prisoner of war for eight months. Promptly being released, he re-entered the service. He served in major battles and was made a full Colonel. After eight years in the Army, he returned to Worcester, ill, and had difficulty resuming his business. He was remanded to debtor's prison, where he died in 1790 at the age of 51. His monument now stands on the Worcester Common and is beautiful to see. I recommend you all, if you are on the Worcester Common, to go see it. Tonight, I would like to recognize the celebration of Constitution Week, an annual celebration signed into law by President Dwight Eisenhower in 1956. September 17, 2022 marks the 235th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States by the Constitutional Convention. Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States, designating September 17 through the 23rd as Constitution Week. I would like to thank you for recognizing Constitution Week in Auburn. The Auburn Public Library will be educating the community by signage, a book display, and relevant handouts. Our chapter will be providing each school in the Town of Auburn posters of the U.S. Constitution, and I would like to present you with a copy of the preamble.
Okay, moving on to public, uh, thank you very much, sorry. Moving on to public hearings, we have R&amp;B Auto Sales Motor Vehicle Class II License at 16 Montclair Drive in Auburn, Massachusetts. Do we have the applicant?
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening. Thank you. Attorney Morrisburg, on behalf of Mr. Biancooley and the application. This has gone through zoning board, planning board, and I believe we've responded to all the concerns of all the various bodies that have asked and inquired about what Mr. Biancooley intends to do there.
I'm sorry, Attorney Bergman. I got caught up with these presentations. We need to open this public hearing first, my apologies. Do we have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. All set, you can proceed, if you could just speak into the microphone.
I should practice by now, so I should go quicker. Attorney Morrisburg, on behalf of the applicant, we've gone through the zoning board here and the planning board. I believe the questions have been responded to, hopefully satisfactorily. I think there's been a recommendation of the planning board to allow the application. We're certainly here and willing to answer any other questions anybody might have. It's essentially a difficult property to do much with, given where it is. Biancooley's been a town resident forever, and I think he's got a good reputation, he can follow through on what his commitments, the commitments he's made to the various boards are, and we're confident that'll be a successful business and a good use of the property, that otherwise probably wouldn't be able to be developed in the same manner. I didn't really recall any opposition at the zoning board level, and I recall any opposition at the planning board level from neighbors. Obviously, you're free to inquire, and hopefully you'll agree that it's a good presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from Board members? No? Any questions from Town Administration?
All set.
All set. Okay. I'll need a motion to close the hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. And do we have a motion to approve or deny?
I'll make a motion to approve the license, provided all applicable requirements of the state, town, and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the license, render it null and void, and that the conditions recommended by the DCG are placed on the license.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Congratulations.
Thank you for your time, thank you.
And members of the community, if there's any, if you're having, if there's people outside or if there's any sitting room issues, the planning board room is open, and this meeting is being televised in the planning room. And we do have a few seats right up back here as well. All right, now we have Agenda Item 3E, Public Meeting on Whitney Street Home Builders, LLC, for a local initiative project for housing development at 16 Perry Place.
Good evening, Board. James Tate, from Asmit Land Design, here for Whitney Street Home Builders.
You can proceed.
So, through the chair, if I can, we had a meeting, is my mic on? If anyone can hear me. We had a meeting three weeks ago, I believe, at the Board of Selectmen, and we asked for additional information from the developer. That information, some of that information came in Friday, and that is in the Board's packet, so we'll try not to turn and look at the Board, because some of them can't hear me. So that should be in the Board's packet as well. So I think it would be helpful if you could go through that additional information, which is some of what the Board is looking for, and then we'd like to just be able to ask a couple of questions with regard to the project itself. I think that's how you wanted to run it, and then at the end have time for a public call.
That's true, that's correct.
Sure. Again, I'm James Tate from Asmit Land Design for Whitney Street Home Builders, and since the last meeting, we're still working on some of the information. The traffic engineer is preparing a much more comprehensive study, which addresses some of the items the Town Planner specifically called for, additional intersections, and we're still, I apologize, this is failing on my part, haven't got to the full auto turn thing, showing that a, the town's 252-inch wheelbase, fire truck can drive through with no issues. That's, that's been my problem dealing with the wonderful auto turn program, but anyways, what we did submit was a revised municipal impacts analysis, which looked in greater depth at the, and I think in a fairly conservative fashion, at the town demands of this development, that there would be in other factors. Police and fire were looked at simply on a per household basis, that the cost at present for so many households is a certain amount, so for this many more, assuming the same ratio of costs per household, that would be that much more cost. We looked at the number of school-aged children, which again, we believe is a bit conservative, and we also, it also assumes that none of the school-aged children in the project would be doing anything but going to the Auburn school system, doesn't factor in any possible private school attendance or homeschooling or anything else. But even with all of these conservative assumptions, the net annual basis of the project would be about $470,000 of net revenue to the town. And again, I think that's based on reasonable assumptions, also on the value of the project itself. I know, I think we initially had one figure in, which the Town Planner questioned, we actually revised that, saying that the overall value would be $31 million, and which I think is in line with similar projects that the applicant has built and with expected assessing. And again, that is, those assumptions are what drives that net calculation of about $470,000 to the town. So we looked at those, and again, we have not gotten back some of the information that the Board is looking for, which is the traffic report, we have not got back. My failing, the analysis showing again that the town's largest fire truck passes through without having to back up or three-point, but we are gonna get that information to you, and we're pretty confident of not having a particular problem with that. I also wanted to just touch up quickly on one thing, there was a, as part of this project, in addition to improving about 900 feet of Perry Place, both width and surface, the applicant is working with the Water District to help them achieve a connection to the City of Worcester system, which will provide redundancy and capacity for the town. And I know there was some comment in emails that that is, you know, money that, funds that the applicant is not giving to the town, but is giving specifically to the Water District. But our position, of course, is that that benefit derived from those funds of extra capacity and redundancy to the system is, still benefits the town citizens. Again, whether the entity through which the money first passed was the town or Water Department, or in this case, the private Water District, the eventual recipient and beneficiary are the town citizens. And we, I know, I don't know if everybody's seen it in the news, but just to see what can happen, you know, recently, the, I think it was the capital of Mississippi, Jackson, Mississippi, had an incident where they were reliant upon especially one pump providing water service to the citizens, and they had an issue with that pump, and now actually a majority of people living in that city have no water service, because they had no redundancy, they had no backup, they had no reserve, and that's the situation essentially that the Water District has been trying to remedy having a backup, having a, affect redundancy through connection to Worcester, that the reserve, I think, is paying for part of that, the applicant would pay for part of that also. So, I guess I would just leave it at that, we'll try and take any questions, but we understand we've partially, we think, fulfilled the additional requirements that the Board had, and we're still working on the rest.
Thank you, and thank you for the information that was provided to us, appreciate that. Do we have any questions of the Board members at this time? Yes?
So you just mentioned their connection to the City of Worcester. Is that, that's only for this development, or does that, the cross-connect will serve that area of town?
Correct, it serves the entire town. It's set the, when we first broached this issue, we were told to talk to the Water District because they believe that they're near their capacity right now, and they told us that, that, in their opinion, that is the situation across town, and that they, their remedy to that is a proposed connection to the Worcester system to be able to, if one of their pumps went out, one of the couple of wells near, near 290, for instance, that they would still be able to have capacity in the town, still be able to continuously provide service, and would not somehow have to come up with, I don't know what sort of jerry-rig situation otherwise. But it's not just for this development, it is for the entire town, but it was to address an ongoing issue that the Water District flagged.
So I know you're still waiting on that traffic study. Do you guys have a number of anticipated cars that you guys would expect from this development?
Oh, geez. Yeah, there's a standard ITE trip code for multifamily units for how many trips per day. I'll get it wrong, it might be 7.5 trips per day, and 10% of that total, which is around 1,000, 10% in the peak hours.
Any further questions? Not at this time. Mr. Carver?
I just noted my mic wasn't on, so, through you, Mr. Chairman, is, the road is being upgraded to subdivision standards, is the plan to eventually come to town meeting and turn that road over to the town, has that been forecast?
No.
Steve and Castle, President of Development Team, choose three, Massachusetts. It's a private road, so that could not be put before the town unless we have all the existing embalts left at the front of the town, so we're willing to work with the embalts and whatever maybe you'd like to call it, it's a private road, or we could make a public road, it's really a tough to build. We do recognize that it's a gravel road, section, some of the last by that road, and should be upgraded, and we're wanting to do that after. So it is, is, you know, working with a consistent layout with existing wetlands on either side, and a border, and driveways, and buses, it's a little bit more fluid and standard, like if we're going to a standard subdivision and everything's wide open, you just go in and fit people out and do the subdivision standard. So generally, when we do improvements to a public lane, we get everybody from the town. So we've had a couple meetings with some of the staff that walk the road there, and we have come up with a couple sketches of what we think would be appropriate for that roadway there, on behalf of the work with the KPDW charge or the planning board or what you designate. You know, that would obviously be part of the ZDA process also, a lot of what we're doing here today would still be brought before the ZDA. You know, you're not the permitting authority for this process, but we are always here for your support, and that's why we're going through this process. We would like to do this as a, as a let project in the coming 40 days, and that's why we're here today before you, willing to make adjustments or combinations to whatever recently we could put together, or try to work together with you. All right, thanks, it's a good question. I want to go ahead and follow this.
Don't worry about it, you're talking to a politician, we're known for it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My only concern is as you're upgrading the road... My only concern is, as you're upgrading the road, that if it's going to create an expense on the existing folks, you know, obviously, they've got a gravel road, they've got a certain degree of expense that they're undertaking when they buy on the road, but obviously, with bituminous and other things, that jacks up the price, so that's why I'm asking.
I wouldn't anticipate you to have any expense at all, you know, monetary expense or other things.
You're going to upgrade the road, if I may. However, at some point, the road will degrade if it doesn't become a public road, if it stays private, then I would assume that everybody on that road would be required to chip in.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
So I'm thinking ahead.
Yeah, I'm thinking ahead, but, well, I, I'd like to, but, the, the, no, I expect to see the road is generally, it's been 20 and 30 years before using the paving job code, but you're welcome to this.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Any further questions? I do have just one concern, the, the title commitment that was issued in the last packet wasn't necessarily persuasive for me, and I just figured it's a point that we need to get right for everybody involved, right? And I know I'm a real estate attorney, but I, I don't profess to know everything, and I think it's, it's, it's a crucial one. Ms. Jacobson, did you hear back from town council?
I did, through the chair. So we reached out to town council, I know, when we met back in January, we had asked about providing proof or documentation that you have the right to develop Perry Place into an access egress for 152 units, and how does that subjugate the rights potentially of the other property owners? As a result, what the chair is referring to is the section, the excerpts you've given us, I think from the title, insurance that show that you do have the right to pass and repass, as well as to make improvements. But the, the question that we had for town council, and I reached out to him when you first filed your application a couple of weeks ago, was how do the rights of the property owner, you supersede the rights of the other abutters who also have that same right? So if there's no agreement from the property owners to do the roadway, what is the legal authority for the developer to proceed? So when I, I asked that question of town council, and the response back from town council is that, first of all, it's a civil matter, it's not up to the town to make that determination, that is between property owners on a private property. So to be clear, we can't make that determination. But our concern is, how can the board make an informed decision about whether to go with an LIP, or whether the ZDA, if it gets to that point, can make informed decisions on conditions, if we don't know the basic question, which is, how can the developer develop this roadway as an access when there are other private property owners whose deeds may or may not say the same thing? And again, this is a question for an attorney, it could end up being a question that has to be determined by a court. So I guess just to be clear, town council said that we really need to continue to get that kind of information. Maybe you have that information for us, but what I'm hearing, and I know the board is hearing, we're hearing that your, your attorneys are saying that you have the right to do that, I see your attorney is on the line, so we appreciate it. But we're also hearing from the residents and the other abutters that they, they also have rights. And our question from the beginning has been, how do you, how do you do a development when you don't have the other property owners who have equal rights to their properties? And if they're not on board, how does this proceed? And do you have an agreement with the residents, which I don't believe you do, we, we know that from some of the concerns that they brings, and not having such an agreement, how would the board be comfortable going forward making a decision if we don't know that legally you have the right to do that? And again, we can't make that determination, but we need to see the documentation that shows that determination. So through the chair, is that clear?
Yeah.
Yes, I see him, Attorney Levine is, is on the call. Sure, uh, do you want to ask?
Attorney Levine, do you want to speak on this matter?
Sure. Can you hear me?
I can, yes.
I, I, the volume coming through is a little difficult for me to hear, but I believe the question is whether we have, or the developer has the right to use the road, is that it in, in generality?
Yeah, in generality, I mean, I, I think I personally can, I mean, understand the McKenna case in the terms of pass, rights to pass and repass over a private way, ownership to the center line. As far as, I think I, to specify it more, was utilities and improvement to the right-of-way when we have others who also have similar rights, that's kind of where I'm.
Again, we've given you a copy of a title commitment that gives us the right to pass and repass, and if you have the right, again, most respectfully, if you have the right to pass and repass, you have the right to improve the road, which, again, the statute says, you know, that includes utilities. So, you know, I, I'm not trying to dismiss anyone's asking the question, I'm just trying to just convey, you know, our feeling. So by way of a simple example, if there's, you know, you have a 20-foot right-of-way, it's shown as two parallel lines, and it's in the woods, well, clearly, but it's in the woods, you clearly have the right to cut the trees down, otherwise, the right-of-way becomes illusory. And then, you know, if you have the right to cut the trees down, you have the right to grade, and, you know, put down gravel or asphalt or whatever, and you also have the right, you know, to put utilities down. So if there's something more definitive that the board wants us to do, whether it be by a, a greater legal opinion, you know, referencing case law, I, I'm comfortable doing that, but, you know, our position, and I think the law clearly is, the right to, to pass and repass includes the right to improve and the right to include utilities. Now, obviously, if others have the right to pass and repass, then there's a joint right, and, you know, people have to, you know, share the right to use it. But I don't even see that as an issue here, because we're gonna, the applicant is gonna improve the right-of-way, which is gonna be for the benefit of everyone. The applicant is gonna install utilities. I don't see the, you know, which utilities will also include drainage and things like that, so the abutters are gonna get a better road than they have. Somewhat of a loss to understand what, and this is respectfully, what, you know, what we're denying the abutters. I mean, if, if it's gonna be electric in the road, perhaps better than it is now, I don't know if there's gonna be any other utilities, drainage is gonna be improved, the road is gonna be improved in terms of geometry and in terms of paving. So I don't think we're taking away any rights, and, and, you know, I'm thinking back, we're probably improving. But I, I can't, I can't say anymore, and I think, you know, I, I'm fairly comfortable with it, title company is fairly comfortable with it. And again, most respectfully, and I don't dismiss anybody's questions about this, it, this is kind of a common thing that happens, where you have the right to pass and repass, and you come in and, you know, you build a subdivision road, you build a, a road that may be eventually taken by the town or remains private.
Thank you, and, and no offense taken whatsoever, it's just, I know you're not here in the room, but we do have a, a room full of concerned citizens, so, again, we're asking the questions just so we make sure we get this all right. I, other board members, would you be in agreement that Attorney Levine had referenced the statute, you offered a legal opinion letter? I don't want to go spending your money, but would you want to see a legal opinion letter just so we have more standing or more understanding that they indeed have this right?
Absolutely.
No, I, I think the question is what, what rights supersede someone else? If there are other people on there that have those equal rights, who's to say they don't want to put, you know, utilities going a different direction that would super, interfere with what you guys are proposing and stuff? So I just want to make sure that no one's rights are being trampled on.
And that's, exactly. And that's what we look to see, and again, I reference this in my line of work daily in terms of private roads all across Worcester, so the McKenna case is our controlling authority. I, I've never seen the statute, so I certainly want to get my eyes on that as well. And again, it is about, not, everyone has the right, but you can't infringe upon others, so, I'm not taking a position on this matter.
The only, the only thing I would say is, if you think about it, you know, if multiple people have the right to pass and repass, it's, it's not a case of, you know, which horse gets to the brook and gets the biggest strength. So what I, what I mean by that, if somebody has a right to pass and repass to somebody else, number one gets there, but he, he can't deny number two's right to equally use the road.
Absolutely.
So, okay, that's all I'm trying to focus, but again, I'm more than happy to give a more definitive or, you know, opinion, and I think it only becomes, it's not even an issue until somebody can tell us how we possibly are minimizing their rights.
Agreed, agreed. And, and thank you for that offer, we, the board would like to see that, that legal opinion letter.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we formally request that letter.
We have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
All right. It is a vote. Can we just take votes in the other presentations?
And I think, through the chair, I, I, I think that would be helpful for us, and then whatever you can provide to us, we can provide to town council, because we want to make sure that the town is also protected in, in the fact that, can they take a vote on a project that maybe can't take place? And if it's proven that it can take place, then that's a different animal that they have to deal with. But I think to keep the project moving and keep the dialogue open, which we want to do, I think it's important to continue to, as you have, give us information in response to our questions. We may still have additional questions, I'm not saying that's, that's the end, and there may be additional questions this evening, but we don't want to stop the project because we're waiting for that information, but that information's critical to determining the ability of the board to even take a position on an LIP. And that's where town council is coming from. And maybe there is case law, which is great, whatever we get from you, we will pass on to town council. So, thank you.
And I further have, we do have two public comments in relation to this project, and then I do, we, we offered to the residents that they could write their questions and send them in via email ahead of time, right? So I do have one, I'm sorry.
Who is town council?
Town council is Bob Henigan. Bob, Bob Henigan. And so this is from John Mertens, and he's on Colonial Road. John states, "I live on Colonial Road and have questions about the wetlands surrounding Kettle Creek. There are maps showing Kettle Creek, however, it meanders in that area and doesn't seem well-defined. The area around Kettle Creek floods regularly enough that there is a lot of water that remains in much of that area. It is, it is also home to coyotes and other wildlife, including a bobcat we regularly, regularly see at our home. Are there provisions to protect the wetlands in this area near Kettle Creek? Have there been any, has there been an environmental impact study performed in this area from a business that has done, has done the study on site? And where can we find that? What are these, what are their considerations for these wetlands slash FEMA-defined flood plane?"
Well, Mr. Chairman, the, the answer to that is that the applicant previously filed a notice of intent for a development on the front of this property, and looked at the wetlands, both at the front of this property and at the, I'll say, the north end, where Kettle Brook, which is a perennial stream, gets closest to it. And on the concept plan that you have before you, the 100 and 200-foot marks out from the stream are on the plan, and we would propose to stay out of those areas entirely. We would actually not propose to alter any wetlands as part of this, with the only possible exception being if, in working with the town on improvement to Perry Place and the, the cross-section of the right-of-way, it was decided to have the road at one particular spot result in a, in a very minor filling, because there's points where the, the wetlands on each side of the road get close, and if the particular location chosen for the cross-section might result in a very small alteration of one of those, but we're not proposing anything at this time, it's simply, I just bring it up as a possibility. And, and if that happened, we would mitigate that by creating a, what's termed a wetland replication area, creating new wetlands somewhere else nearby at at least a ratio of two to one.
All right. And next, we have public comments.
And I would just add in that we have an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission confirming those wetland boundaries.
Excellent, thank you, sir. All right, we have Kevin German at 12 Pearl Street. Yes, sir?
Uh, yes. Good evening, Chairman, board members, thanks very much for letting us come over and talk to this very important subject for this, this critical possible change of our neighborhood. Well, myself, my family, and, and other people that asked me to say things, I could not be here tonight for various reasons, we strongly oppose the 154-unit construction development form happening at 16 Perry Place along with the 267-car parking lot plus three, sorry, 30 garages on, on top of that. And there's a lot of reasons for it, it's a really, if, if you haven't gone down the road, please go down there, it's really narrow, you're talking about this and that, about paving it and all that stuff, you're gonna have to widen the road, and you're gonna have to take people's property, it's just, it's just not wide enough. They have to, right now, be very careful about passing each other on that road. It is gravel, a lot of it, yep, and it is really, really narrow, so you have to figure out how you're gonna widen the road without taking away people's, you know, land, so. It's not a, it's not a small change, it's a transformation, it's not a transition, it's transformation, it's a very large project considering the scope and where it's placed in the neighborhood. It's a very private, you know it's a private road, and it's small, and, and we don't think that the road and surrounding towns can, can handle the extra traffic. You're gonna have hundreds of people and hundreds of cars that live there, not to mention all the people that are, are gonna visit and, and whatever it is, and the drain on the police, the fire, water, as you said, they're gonna have to try and get Worcester's water, and they're also gonna have to use solid and water waste where's, where's that gonna go? If there is that development, people in the neighborhood know that, that they get water in the basement from a strong flood. And these people are gonna, you know, well, you are gonna take away some of the, the wetlands, it's, it's really impossible to not do that. I have a bunch of stuff, but the, the neighborhood is families with children, they walk the dogs, parents pushing kids on strollers, and we already have enough cut over traffic from Rockland Road. These people are just, you know, they don't pay attention to the stop signs, they're going down 50 miles an hour, I know, I live on the street, I watch it all the time, they're not paying attention, kids are in the road, people walking, you know, the children and stuff like that, it, it's dangerous the way it is not to add hundreds more to, to this issue. And the bylaws are actually here for us citizens to protect us from overcrowding, drainage, you know, you know it all, conservation, natural resources, stop the blight and pollution, and regulate the land uses that are gonna impact the town's natural fiscal and physical obligations to the people. And there's also wildlife, there's a lot of different kind of wildlife, I can't believe I find deer in my yard and all, like, you know, close to the city, what are they doing in my yard? I love it, but that's, that's the kind of neighborhood it is, and it's gonna, it's like putting Walmart at the end of the street. It's, it's a huge, huge deal, it's gonna take the town away from Auburn and turn it into a city, and we don't really want to have that turn into a city. We want to keep the town of Auburn the way it is, we, we work, we pay taxes all the lives so we can live in a community like this, that is away from the big city. And now they're bringing the city into our neighborhoods. I know you're gonna help people, but there's other places you can do it that aren't nearly as complex as what this appears to be, and we don't want our tax dollars subsidizing a developer who's gonna get tax breaks for 40B, and I don't know if that was the original intent, it's just something that can get over the bylaws, which is a tool to be used by certain people to, to get their way. And we're the ones stuck with it, we live there, the developers aren't gonna be there, we're gonna have to live there, all of us and more people are gonna be there longer than they're gonna be there, developing it, come in, make the millions, leave, and we're there to pick up the pieces. The damage to the neighborhood is gonna be totally different. Anybody agree?
Agree.
So, seem to have some like minds here, and I would really like to ask you to strongly consider not changing this part of Auburn, please go down there and see it if you haven't yet, it's really a small dead-end road, like you said, water on both sides of the road, water at the end, it's not, it's not gonna be an easy, an easy thing, and people are gonna, you know, developer comes in and then they leave, and, you know, all the, all the things that you, you guess would be okay may not necessarily turn out that way, isn't that correct? Well, thanks, everybody.
Mr. Chair, just so you know, the other room is also full of residents that could not fit into this room. Yes, you can go, Ben? Thank you. We do need to recognize, though, that the developer does have rights as well here, we're, we're trying to balance these between the residents here and the developer, and with a full understanding of what 40B is. a full understanding of what 40B is and what rights that takes away from the town to have it again put, okay? Next, we have, is it Dean Harris or Dean Hazees?
Dean Hazees.
Dean Hazees.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Residents, how you doing? My neighbor's-
Just one second, my apologies. That is 11 Pearl Street.
Oh, yeah, I, this is Amy, Amy Miller, and we bought a house on 11 Pearl Street. We're right on the corner of Perry Place and Pearl. So my, obviously, my question, and a lot of questions were answered by the last person who made the speech, my neighbor. But my number-one concern is the road. It's not white. And I don't understand why all these cars are going to go in and out in that one spot. It doesn't make any sense. I don't know how they're going to do it. You're talking about 600 cars, okay, a day, times seven trips? Is that the estimate, or 7.6? Because, you know, people say 150 cars or 160 spots and 30 garages, but-
Just one speaker at a time, please, guys.
I live in a house, I've got three kids, we all have cars, that's five cars in one house. So, yeah, you're going to have apartments with two bedrooms or whatever, they're going to have people that live there. It's not going to be just 1.6 persons per unit. So my concern is traffic. My other thing is this traffic study that hasn't been done, it's a little disingenuous. I mean, they were talking a month ago, but I've been hearing about this development for a year, or maybe longer. So I just want that to, you know, marinate in your brain a little bit. So it's a trust issue for me right away, that I sit here and I hear and I don't hear. It just sounds like, I don't know, for lack of a better word, political vandalism. Do you have anything to say?
Yeah, I mean, my main concern is, again, the traffic.
And if you can give your name.
Oh, my name's Amy Miller. I live at 11 Pearl also.
Thank you.
We've lived there for about five years, and the neighborhood is fantastic. It's quiet, it's peaceful. Adding 200-plus people is going to, I mean, well over that, is going to drastically change it. Again, going down that street, when you go down like Perry Street, you got to be careful. You know, you got to, there's cars, there's kids. We all know each other's cars and kids. We know which kids, which houses have the kids, and, whoa, we got to be really careful here, and, you know, we look out for that. When you've got 600 more cars going up and down that street, that's not going to be the issue. It's, you know, I grew up in a town, I want my kids to grow up in a town, and like my neighbor said, this is going to feel more like a city with this many people added. I don't want to live in a city, and I just bought this house, so I sure don't want to move. But it's the traffic, it's the safety, and it's just too small of a street, and I'm not willing to give up any of my property that I just paid very good money for. Thank you.
Go down there and look at it, it's a dead end. Why are they doing this down there? There's nothing there, there's nowhere to go, there's nowhere to grow, it makes no sense. So please, please, if you have any say in this, say no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to note, because it's been, I think, slightly misrepresented a couple times, Perry Place is a 40-foot-wide right-of-way. Right now, it has a paved, it has a drivable surface. Our right-of-way is the legal limits. As I was saying, it has a drivable surface that varies in width between 18 and 22 feet. We'd be making it 24 feet as our first proposal for what would be the improvement to the road.
And that's, that's the required length in Auburn under its bylaws, correctly, correct?
Correct.
And through the chair, it is a 40-foot easement as confirmed.
Okay, and that is a 40-foot easement as confirmed.
I mean, a 40-foot right-of-way.
Right-of-way, yep. Okay. All right. So, guys, I think, I hope you found those, you know, the public comments constructive for you guys, so you know what the concerns are. So I think at this point, we're looking for a legal opinion letter, certainly the traffic study, which you guys have known full well about, and I believe the fire department's concerns as well in terms of that turning radius. Is there any other-
Through the chair, just, we did receive a copy of the municipal impact analysis, so first of all, I wanted to thank you for updating that for us. We may have some additional questions on that. I need to circulate that to the department head. For instance, just looking quickly at it, I know it just came in the day before, but just looking quickly at it, just some of the data as far as how you develop the impact on the police and fire. We may want to just talk offline about how you arrived at that, was, generally, we look at call volume, and I didn't see anything in the run-call volume, but this analysis could be based on a different methodology, which would be acceptable as well. So we just keep that line of communication open, we'll run the questions through the town planner as we go through this, if we have questions, if we can reach out to you. I know the fire chief needs to take a look at this, police chief. Again, for us, the comments that we've had internally, we've shared with you, concerned about the width of the road, concerned about, take away the legal, the civil matters, that's separate, but just looking at the width of the road, what improvements have you made? What's the impact to the neighborhood? And how, if the board entered into an LIP with the developer, how would you help us mitigate those impacts on the neighborhood? And maybe we can work something out, and I don't know if considering less units is something that you'd look at, but I think those are all dialogue that we need to continue to have, because this is a major, major project, as you know. And we recognize that you have rights under Chapter 40B. We're not trying to remove those rights, we're just trying to make sure we do the due diligence here to understand before the board makes a decision on an LIP. Because we know you can go forward with or without the board, so we're trying to do the best we can for the town and for the residents. So we would appreciate if you continue to just work with us, get the information to us as we request it. I'll circulate that in the morning to all the department heads to take another look at it, and you'll probably hear from us again.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Largess, we're going to hold comments till next time. You're certainly free to email them over, but again, we're gathering information right now, so I just don't see any point to-
I just have a couple of questions.
Well, you can certainly reach out to me at the office, you can email me, and we can, I can have them ready for next meeting. And if I do see them urgent, I could have, through the town, I've been to the town manager, I will them over to the developer.
Through the chair, I think what would be helpful, I know the board sent out a letter to the neighbors asking to submit any questions, if possible, in writing. If you can't do them in writing, please feel free to call our office and we'll take them down. We need to have that, we only received one, believe it or not, which was there, but having them in writing helps us define, because then there's no concern over what was the question. We need to be able to look at the question and share that with the developer. So we're getting the questions answered that you're asking us, so that would be helpful.
Yes, we do want to get as much information for everybody out there as possible, so that you can have more focused, more poignant questions of the developer when the time is right. But we're really in that fact-finding, that's why I've made the decision not to necessarily open these hearings to follow on public comment, because we frankly don't have enough information at this point in time. Furthermore, folks, you don't need the hand-raising, public comment time was, you had the opportunity and the chance to email.
I'm concerned about the address, because we weren't aware, or a lot of us weren't aware, that you were requesting emails, or you would have written them.
Absolutely.
We didn't even get letters, we didn't get letters.
Through the chair, I can, first of all, there's no requirement for the town to have a public hearing on this, just so we're clear. That requirement comes when it goes to the ZBA. That's a requirement for public hearing. We felt as a courtesy to the residents in the area that we would follow the public hearing legal requirements, which is a 300-foot notice to the butters within 300 feet of the project. So if the butters were not notified, that's where, if it was a legal requirement, we notified the legal requirement, but there is no legal requirement to do it. So we followed the 300-foot buffer. So some of you may not have received the letter, but we went by what the ZBA and/or Planning Board would use, which is a 300-foot buffer from the center of the project.
Can we find that online at Auburn Government? The address is right?
Oh, yes, I guess, everything, yep, you can send it to our office at, you know, 102 Central Street, attention to the board, attention to me. Yes, we, again, it's important for us to have that in writing, because we need to track what the questions are that we're getting, so we can get them all together and get them to the developer to get the answers for you. Sometimes people will just stop us on the way, or, you know, make a quick phone call to a board member and say, oh, what about this? We want to make sure we're not dropping anything, there's a lot of people, we understand, there's a lot of questions, we don't want to miss someone's important question. So while you may not be able to put it in writing, we understand that everyone has access to computers, that's fine. Call our office, we'll read it back to you so we know we got it right, and we're going to compile all the questions. We just want to make sure your voices are heard, and this, as the chair said, this is the best word, that the chair decided to make sure that everybody is heard. And then, once we get your questions and we give them to developer, and the developer can respond to it, then at that point, you can probably open to-
At that point, we have productive conversation, productive information being shared, no one's being surprised, and we're keeping a lot of emotion out of it, so these meetings don't devolve. And that's really my central point by doing it, but I'm absolutely asking questions and making sure we do this the right way on behalf of you residents. So certainly get those emails over to us, and at this point, I think we're looking to probably get some more information from you gentlemen? Okay.
And if you could get us the questions through the chair, within the next, you know, week or so, that would be helpful, because respectfully, we want to make sure that the developer has an opportunity to answer the questions. Some of the questions are very detailed, as what we just received, some may require a short answer, and some may require a longer answer. And likewise, some of the questions are directed to a town administration, so we want to make sure we get the right information to you as well. We'd rather give you the right information and take a couple days to get it than to just answer it on the fly and give you the wrong information.
Mr. Chambers?
Is there a preferred email that they can email, like, for this, that we can state now when anyone re-watches?
Yeah, I'm going to have to look at the letter, just give me a second, because it's a special, it's a directed Board of Selectmen email address, I just want to make sure I have it. I'll get it for you in a minute.
Yeah, because this just says the select words.
Right. And if you could, in the subject line, because we get a lot of emails to this address, if you could just put in the subject line, Perry Place, so we can get to it right away. Sorry, when you do send an email, we'll get you the address in a minute, please put in the subject line, Perry Place, so we can get to it right away. And believe it or not, we probably get to that email account, or at least to my email account, we get probably 14, 15,000 a year. So we don't want it to get lost. So if you put it in the subject line, we'll get it. So I think one of them is, and certainly you can send it to this one as well while we're waiting. So AuburnBOs@town.auburn.m-a.us. It's also on the website. So if for any reason you can't find it, go back and check the town's website, look under Board of Selectmen, there's a link right there, you can actually just click on that link, and you don't even have to type the address in, you can get right to it. Go on Tom Andrew's site, you can just click on it, and it goes right to it, which is, I think it's TownMGR, TownMGR with the same address. So we'll get it if you send it to us, and we appreciate, if you could get it to us sooner than later, that helps us continue this due diligence process. So, and we do want to thank you for being responsive and getting back to us, and I'll share the questions as I receive them. Oh, do you want to set a next meeting date?
Yes. Is next meeting enough time? It's 26?
It's 26, yeah, it's 26.
Is that timeframe work, you gentlemen?
Yeah.
All right. All right, so before we, I'll entertain a motion to continue this matter, I would ask for any folks that aren't wishing to stay for the remainder of the meeting, when you do vacate the room, if you could, just keep comments down and keep conversation down until you get outside the building, or at least downstairs. There's no wall right here, so it gets really loud when people just step right outside and start speaking.
And through the chair, if I may, just, we won't send another notice, because we've done two, this is just a continuation of this public meeting, so you all hear that date. So it's September 26, rather than notifying the butters again. And again, we understand, it goes beyond the 300 feet, but hopefully you're sharing with your neighbors that go beyond that.
6:30.
Yeah, and sometimes I would have to double-check, there may be a public hearing as we had tonight, we have to schedule public hearings 14 days prior to, sometimes even more. So sometimes there's a public hearing that's already scheduled for 6:30, which is maybe why it starts at quarter seven. But the meeting itself starts at 6:30, and it will be one of the first items on the agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to continue.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
We're going to go back in session. And we have newly Dr. Adam Monard here this evening. We have a motion to move up Agenda 5A.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. Sir?
I'm sitting, Dr. Adam Monard, from the town floor. This is, I suppose, only changed for October 11 meeting. It's the same note, the way you were made, it was postponed after the town meeting, bringing a bad, got the clearance, the attorney general, some of our previous changes that was impacted this. Your cause, stately, prominent, you will imply, according to the law, problems apply in certain areas, this will surely be eligible for certain programs, so that's in the nutshell, this one is in force.
Excellent. Do we have any questions from the board members?
I assume that map has been shown at the planning board meeting?
Sorry.
Is there a map that shows the areas that are being changed, and has that been presented at the planning board meeting?
This is scheduled for our conference, and it's transferred overnight, it's all the map, change it to the table.
Any further questions? And do we have a motion?
Make a motion, we transmit it for the required public hearing.
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. Thank you, Ed. Okay, we're going to go back to the Agenda Item Number 3F, that would be the Town Human Resource Study.
Through the chair, thank you very much. Tonight, we have with us, well, first of all, I want to acknowledge the school superintendent, Dr. Beth Chamberlain, who's here, and I have to say, just by way of history on this, we received a grant from the state through the Community Compact Program, and we received a grant to enable us to enter into a contract with the Collins Center to study the possibility of a joint town-slash-school human resource function or department. And the previous school superintendent was very supportive of this, and when Beth Chamberlain was appointed in January, we reached out to her and said, we've got this study ongoing, and she was well aware of it anyway, because she had been the assistant superintendent, and she continued to be supportive. So I just want to thank her, because this involved a lot of interviewing and time of both school department personnel as well as town personnel. So it's been a really good partnership to get us to this point. So given that, I want to introduce Mary E. Carty, who's been the lead on this, and Lindsay Katz is working with Mary from the Collins Center, and she is on remotely this evening. So Mary, welcome, and I also want to thank you for all the work that you've done with Lindsay. This has been going on for maybe nine months now, eight, nine months? It's a lot of work. This has never been done. We've, in the town here, we've never had a combined human resource function, and we just really felt it was critical to look at this and see how we can make some efficiencies, how we can do this better. And Mary's going to go over the results of the study, and I want to thank Ed, too, and his staff, because they were, they did a lot of work on this as well.
They sure did. So, good evening, thank you so much. I brought a sweater in case I got cold in here. Now I'm going to my sauna, so it's been fun so far. We're so happy to be here, and this is, have to say, I've been with the Collins Center almost 13 years, and this is one of the best collaborative groups that I have worked with. To start out with, the general government and the school department jointly want a project is really unheard of, and I think it was time and space and leadership and circumstances of, you know, what the town is facing in its next chapter and really being preemptive. So what I'm going to do tonight is just briefly go through some slides, which summarizes the points you're going to have time to digest when you read the report. I'm not going to read the report to you, if you want to fall asleep later, don't read it, because it's riveting, and it's going to keep you up. So tomorrow, when you want to wake up, you want to read that. So if you're not familiar with the Collins Center, we're a center within the McCormick School of Government at UMass Boston. We were created in 2008 with the sole purpose and missions to help governments work better. I've been blessed to be able to be with the center for 13 years. My background is municipal HR- My background is municipal H R and labor relations. I quit my job eighteen years ago. I know that because my son just turned eighteen and he's my last one going through public school. He's a senior in Shrewsbury High. And I was the H R director for the town of Watertown for many years and Barnstable before that, the state D P W before that, doing labor relations. So it's a joy to work with municipalities who are so dedicated and we just love the people we work with. So my colleague, Lindsay Katz, who really did much of the interviewing and reading through everything is on the Zoom call. So I want to just call her out and thank her for all of her legwork back and forth with Ed and with Deb and with the school department. Everybody was gracious with their time and us really being annoying, going after them for a little bit more detail or a little bit more explanation. You do this work and you get an overview and then you have to dig in to really see how things go. So we are really grateful for that. So as the town manager mentioned, you were smart to get a community compact grant. It's a great opportunity to look at a project that you wouldn't otherwise do. And, you know, I don't know if you're eligible again this year, but go for it. There's I T grants, there's regionalization grants, efficiency grants. So it's been a great partnership and a great program. And really what you wanted, what we started out with was using words like shared H R. And what the, the project ended up with was a slight difference on that to be centralized. And it's not much of a difference, but we really feel that for this municipality, others have different ones, where you have a joint employee with two bosses and it, it can get a little tricky. So we're really glad that there's flexibility in these grants to come up with the analysis and then really maybe go in a little bit different direction, all with the same purpose in mind. And as the town manager said, tremendous support. Nobody was defensive. Everybody was on board and that is just so unheard of. So we appreciate that. So human resources today, and I think this is probably one of the impetus of why the town wanted to look at this. You know, we need to see is, is, is H R, and I'm going to shorten it to H R, so I don't fumble over human resources every single time. Is it transactional or strategic? You know, when you think about personnel, it's the job descriptions, it's the filing. But really, what is the biggest expense of your budget? Your people or things related to your people, right? It, it's about the, the resources that you dedicate to the humans who work for you. And you have to be strategic about that. So that's where organizations in all lines of work are moving. Municipalities have come a little bit slower to it, but being, having the foresight to look at this and how are we functioning as a general government and a school department? It was wise and I think the timing is just right. We have so many challenges out there. Everybody's talking about the Great Exodus, people quitting, people retiring, being thoughtful about succession planning. Obviously, this town is doing that well and I'll get to that when we get through the report. The increased pressure on H R legally, liability, laws, mandates, policies. You know, in my twenty-five years, it has been night and day that increases. And I think that's true in most of our municipal work, whether it's E P A, there's all these mandates. And we have to be a little bit more thoughtful. How are we handling it? And how are we using our resources, not just human, our financial resources efficiently and effectively? Is there redundancy? So a lot of the work we do is looking at those things. And I did mention the mandates and sadly, with humans and workplaces, there's liabilities, whether it's injury, whether it's lawsuits, whether it's policies. And by having dedicated H R focused on that, people do a lot with the little people. You know, you have staff, you need somebody dedicated paying attention to these things. And you have really strong department heads. Their job is not solely the human side of things. So dedicating some resources to the human side of things is where I know you will go. All right. Our methodology was, I'm going to go quickly. We interviewed extensively the town manager's office, the superintendent's office, all of the finance people, the school business finance office. And not only the managers, but the staff doing the work on a day-to-day basis. We need to hear from them on how it works. We can have, we can have managers know the goal and the end results, but the nuts and bolts, we talk to the staff doing the work. Human resource functions we looked at, just to name a few, they're all in details. We've got tables within the charts, the charts and tables within the report. We're going to let you at your leisure go through those. But these are the things that we look at, that you, our human resources, when you think about it. Classification, recruitment, policy development, training development, employee relations, benefit administration, post-employment issues of, of COBRA, unemployment, retirement, all those things. We looked at all of these and more. Our key recommendations, which is why we put it on the first page too, because you don't have to flip to the end. We really do recommend strongly that you have a centralized H R function. The wording within your chart of accounts and your budgets might still be under town manager. So we're calling it the H R function and/or department. I think when you set it up, whether it's financial or, you know, having it be a, a function within the town manager's office or a separate department, that's totally up to the town and how you want to operate that. We, we do recommend that you centralize all H R. We recommend that you use your succession planning model that you've got going on here and we commend you. I do an awful lot of executive recruitments for town administrators, town managers. You are so smart and to grab the talent you have and run with it. So I want to commend you on that. And I see there's a typo in manager on my report, on my slide, I'm sorry. And we do think that you should combine the role of an H R director with the assistant town manager. That's a model that we see in this area because you're not a large enough town to have or need a full-time H R director at a, and you would need to pay a high salary for that. And an assistant and an H R coordinator. So it really is the model, Grafton has the model, Northborough has the model, Shrewsbury has that model. And more and more are moving to it, not only because it makes good sense, but it also is broadening the field for succession planning across professionalizing municipalities. So I'm kind of a geek about that. But when we looked at the work that was being done here and needed to be done here, this made the most sense for Auburn. It, it's not a recommendation we give all the time. Oftentimes we say, yes, you're, you're a big municipality, you're a city, you need an H R department, you need this. So we do not enter it into it lightly, but we think based on the data we were able to collect and coalesce, that that is the best recommendation. And I already buried the lead, create a centralized H R function within the town manager's department. And create the one position we're suggesting to add as a standalone position is an H R generalist position. What this would do is provide broader H R support. You have a fabulous H R benefits coordinator who does some other things other than benefits. What has also happened is there's been some transition in duties in the school department. There was a very long-serving employee who retired and we are kind of capturing some of those duties to be part of this H R generalist position. This H R generalist would be a professional, not really an assistant department head. It's the same level as the H R benefits person. And it would be that who's managing leave, who's handling, helping with policy, training, development. It's really that position's going to, that's going to help you focus on the day-to-day things you're not getting to with your current structure. What you're doing in this town is being done well. It's what you're not getting to, that strategic thing, the, the planning for succession, the planning for training and development, those kinds of things. Those are the things that are, that are not able to be gotten to in a comprehensive way. So the creation of an H R generalist position will help. It will also help in cross-training with some of the other positions that touch H R. And because right now, if you have a vacancy in your, one of your key positions, you're in a lot of trouble. Who do you get to do that? I believe Ed can manage payroll and benefits, but you know, he's doing a few other things too. So, so we do recommend the creation of a generalist position. And then on the smaller items, you'll see that we call it adopt specific recommendations for improvement on key H R functions. We have some slight process improvement recommendations on how you do payroll, how do you do some of your transactions? So you'll see that section at the end of the report. That is a very brief overview. I want to say thank you for allowing us to be here and I'm going to restate how impressed we are with the staff that you have. I know you know you have good staff and so committed, so dedicated. Not one person rolled their eyes at us. And that's, that's a true, true compliment. And there's three hundred and fifty-one municipalities, I've worked in about a hundred and seventy-five of them over my thirteen years with the Collins Center. And this has just been a really great project with everybody rowing in the same direction with their eyes on the prize. So I want to thank you. And then happy to answer any questions. I know you've got a long evening. I can answer questions now. I can answer questions via email or come back another time after you've had some time to digest.
Thank you so much. That was, that was a great presentation. Do we have any questions from the board members?
Was there an analysis of how many hours would be saved by hiring the generalists so they can get to the other work? Those key department heads that are currently doing the multiple functions?
We did, we did do some analysis on what the department heads were doing. There's positions in the town manager's office. We did not do, it's really hard to encapsulate the percentage of time. When there's a vacancy in a department, it can be a huge amount of time. So it really is, there is going to be a significant shift from some of the functions in the, the school department. Whereas the, it used to be that the onboarding was kind of coordinated. We were really recommending that things are centralized. So what will happen is there may be more work on the benefits position, but some of that work will be freed up to the generalist. So I think that it's a bigger shift there than from the individual departments. We have, and I know that the assistant town manager, finance director has worked recently on payroll processing. So we've already seen some, you, you all are already making strides in some of those things. I really think it's more a matter of the, the work division. There's a part-time clerical position that does workers comp and injured on duty. There's a capacity there over the short and long term to refine some of those things. But that function is working really well now. It might be shifted and you don't know what's, what's coming next. I think you're going to find that it's a best practice. It's going to be more efficient, but it's not cutting anything. It's growing and it's doing things you haven't, quite frankly, done that you should be doing. So yes, it will make it more efficient. It will be much better for employees coming on, one-stop shopping when you get hired. You're not going to guess, well, particularly for the school employees, you know, they kind of get sent to town hall, you know, and then they're, well, who do I see about this? So I think really the efficiency and the consolidation. And there's partnerships with the mass teachers and the retirement system for the general government and for those non-teachers at the school department. So it's those kinds of efficiencies. And I'm not sure that there's a direct analysis of time, but process improvement.
Through the chair, if I may add to that, thank you, Mary. We, part of the exercise that we started at one point was to see, there's a list in your report of how many people work on H R. And we each tried to submit the amount of hours and literally it changed on a daily basis. Because I filled it out on a Thursday and the following Monday, I went from a twenty-five percent of my week to a ninety percent of my week because an incident happens. So for me, trying to figure out how many hours I spend, I can generally tell you probably forty percent of a normal work week. And of course, none of us have a normal work week. So it, it all depends on how many hours you put in. So the percentage wasn't working. If we put in eighty hour week, was I spending twenty? Yes. If I only put a forty hour weekend, I was spending twenty. There were weeks that I maybe I only spent ten and there were weeks that maybe I ended up spending sixty because we had to update, update some things. We were doing some contract work and then speaking with Dr. Chamberlain, she's in the same situation. Certain things happen that you don't see coming, that you know takes your time. But I would say I've been doing this for twelve years. And when we first did the charter change back in two thousand and eleven, we had said that we, I would be the H R director, you know, as the town manager. But recognizing that over the years, we're going to get everything else done that was a priority. And when we get to it, we're going to get to the H R. And unfortunately, we just didn't get to it. And I knew it was important to have it done. It was just one of those things where I thought, okay, somebody else needs the resources, some other department needs something, I'm just going to put it off. But it's getting to the point where there are days I can't do the regular operations because of all the H R. And I know I can speak, Ed has the same issue. And I think Dr. Chamberlain has said the same thing. There were days you, you just have no idea what the H R is. And I would say it was particularly complicated by COVID, which made it even more hard to put it an hour timeframe on. Because with COVID, whatever we had tripled. Because on a daily basis, there were new laws, there were new regulations, there were new requirements. It kept coming from the state, from the federal government, from the CDC. There wasn't a day that we weren't saying something else we needed to do with all the employees. So that became kind of, you know, at those points, maybe seventy-five percent of a normal work week would have been dedicated to H R issues because of COVID. So it was an interesting exercise. So we thank you, but we scrapped it because there was just no way to do that.
Another question. So one of the recommendations is to centralize it under the town manager department. But the assistant town manager would serve as the H R director. Are we looking to add requirements as we look to fill that role? Or is, are there certifications that would be required over?
Through the chair, there, there are, you know, I'll turn to Ed to answer that. But I can tell you there are certifications that didn't even exist probably twelve years ago. They exist now. I think when, when you start putting your, your recommendations together and your job description together, Ed's probably going to be looking for somebody who has real specific either qualifications, experience and or certifications.
Yeah, if I may, I, I think the situation as it exists today offers a unique opportunity to put a focus on that. Certainly as a result of the appointment that the board has made for me, I'm very appreciative of that. We can now kind of morph this position that I'm currently serving in. I have the financial expertise in the background. I don't need an assistant with also a financial background. I need an assistant more to deal with the day-to-day administrative aspects of the town manager's position when required. But also it offers an opportunity to focus on H R and some of the deficiencies that we've recognized as a result of Mary doing the study. I can tell you both school department and general government went through a difficult time over the past year. I lost a thirty-five-year payroll individual. School department lost the same thing. We had no backup. And it forced people on the management level to jump in and put out the fires and do the payroll. We're trying to address that now through H R where we have layers on the onion that will allow us to be, have some continuity in the way we address our H R and personnel functions. That was really bifurcated because the school department was doing what they thought was right, we were doing what we thought was right. And in some cases, they were in conflict with one another. And that's when you expose yourself to potential liability, when you're not consistently treating employees the same way. So I want to thank Mary and Melissa, they did a fantastic job. We had some in-depth discussions over the last nine months that really resulted in what Mary came up with in terms of recommendations. We're on board with that. I've had conversations with, with Dr. Chamberlain. We're both on, on, on board with, with these recommendations. I think it makes all the sense in the world. And it's also really allowed us to now shift gears a little bit and consider decentralizing our payroll, put it at the department level when it was all being done in the accountant's office. Put it at the department level when it was all being done in the accountant's office. So we want to kind of phase that in and train our, our employees. And once again, it creates some redundancy and some layering, not only at the higher level, but at the departmental level too. So, um, and we've always, um, put a focus on cross-training that allows us to mobilize people where they're needed at times of distress or at times when, when people may be out for a long period of time. And then we're going to continue to focus on that. But I think that captures the essence of what the recommendations I made before you tonight.
I just have not really on the report itself, but just a general ask. Has the school committee, has it been presented to them yet?
I'm going to turn to the Dr. Chamberlain to respond to that.
Yes, this has been presented to school committee and we are in full support, much of what has been described here. This is becoming, I didn't go to school for HR, right? That wasn't my area of focus and it's become increasingly complex. Certainly COVID layered, layered something on there. But there's more to it with the requirements that go along with really onboarding people in a professional and appropriate way. Making sure it's consistently done and carried forward. And then it does limit liability and mistakes that can happen down the board, down the way. So we're all in favor for this. And I think there was a lot of duplication of effort, which we see as, you know, we can use that time for better purposes.
Thank you. I was just concerned that they might be watching and seeing this for the first time. So I would not want that to happen.
Through the chair, they were aware when we applied for the grant. We made sure at the time Superintendent Anfield and I had spoken and I had come to this board to let you know we were applying and he had gone to the school committee. So this has been on their radar screen since the day we applied.
Most everything.
Okay.
So yeah, if that's, so Mary, you want to?
That's great. No, I, I, I think that it's a, a smart move to combine. You will get that strategic partner in HR at the executive level. And that will filter across all, all departments. So we wish you all the best. Please reach out. We have any, any questions? As I said, I live in nearby Shrewsbury, happy to pop over. Not after your next public hearing, however.
Have a good evening. Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Lucy. That's for the chair. I just want to also thank Deb DuBois for all the work she put into this. She's our HR benefits coordinator and she's got a full plate, as do all of us. We all have a piece of this, but we are working toward implementation of this to see, you know, again, we don't have plans like this that we sit on a shelf. That's, we have too many other things to do than to do, make a plan that we're not going to follow. So we are following the plan, we're starting to implement it. We're working with the school department and Beth to determine how we can go forward and get this position funded for the generalists. And then down the road, as we start having turnover and retirements, we are already looking ahead to how do we kind of redirect some of those positions as well. What's for the Ed and, and Dr. Chamberlain doing?
Excellent. All right, we have, uh, no gift acceptances to be done this evening. So moving on to 5C, under proclamations and recognitions, we have a request for proclamation to, request for proclamation to recognize September as childhood cancer awareness month. All members had the materials in their packets. Do you have anything to add on that, medic? Okay. Do we have any questions, the board members? I think we are able to take a vote on this matter if you've had enough time to review it.
We do things different. We did different things. So I'm not going to say anything because there are three members. So your voices should be heard on this. It's, you know, what we want to do. We pass the capital for these type of things. Does that mean that we can't? At one time, the board used to give a proclamation every year for U N day. They haven't done that for 15 years. So as a new board, I would like the board to make a decision as to what you guys want to do for the board rather than the site of history.
Okay. We appreciate that. And do we have a motion?
Uh, I would make a motion for a proclamation to recognize September as childhood cancer awareness month.
In a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is a vote.
Through the chair, may I ask consideration for moving up item 6D? I see our DPW director, Joanna Paquin, is still on the call.
Yes.
So we have, if you would.
Absolutely. Do we have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a votes.
Thank you. Joanna Paquin, our DPW director is on the call and we just have a standard vote to declare equipment as surplus. For those of you who maybe who we, we do this anytime it's surplus equipment. Joanna, do you want to speak to this?
Good evening. So there's five pieces of equipment that are basically at their end of use life, two dump trucks and, and three Sanders. Looking to put the dump trucks for auction and, and I'm not really sure if we can do much with the Sanders, but it would be disposing as well.
Do we have any questions of the board members? Yes.
I see different year models and stuff. I, I didn't know what end of useful life was and if there's a schedule. The 2007 model was just held on longer. Or like what is the overall process for disposal?
Sure. So we try to keep these dump trucks used for about years. So they did hang on longer than we were hoping. So we, we got more life out of them than, than we expected. But at this point, it's their, um, it's going to take, it's going to cost more. It's not worth trying to fix them. So we're, we're looking to, to get rid of them.
Thank you. Any further questions? And do we have a motion?
Motion to declare the item's surplus as outlined on the DPW director's memo to the board.
In a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is a vote.
Thank you. Thank you, Joanna.
Right. Going back to order, I show that we would be to, gets confusing when we jump around.
Yes.
I believe we're on to item 6B. Update on the reserve at Ashworth Hill and donation recommendations. And with that, I'll turn it over to Julia Jacobson.
Great, thank you. In your packet, you'll find a memo that I prepared that shows the update on the Eastland Partners project on Blaker Street, which is known as the reserves at Ashworth.
Don't have it.
Uh, I will press this along.
I can get it later.
My apologies. So the memo was in there and I was remiss. I did not actually put the construction schedule in that I had Sharon send today. So that's in your packet now and it was not in the packet on Friday. So this project was approved back for an LIP, which is interesting because we just had this discussion tonight around LIP. This was approved by the board on October 28th, 2019. Now, at the time, it was obviously about six months before COVID and the developer had a schedule. And he's off of that schedule, much of which due to COVID and related supply chain issues, labor issues, things like that. Things just got slower. So we asked him for an updated schedule. And along with that, we wanted to know what the donation schedule would be based on that. So in your packet, there's a description of the, it's 324 units. I put some information in here that I thought the board might be interested in hearing, especially with the other project proposed right now. So right now, our SHI, which is subsidized housing inventory. If you look on the state's website, it's still only showing about 3.8%. That's outdated. It has been updated. They just haven't updated their website, but it is updated in the, in the actual inventory. Our affordable housing inventory right now is 5.8%. And the reason it jumped recently was because Julia Bankrupt is almost completed. So when a project is, pulls building permits, generally that's the start of when they can start counting it. But if a project takes a longer time, sometimes they wait until you get the occupancy permit. So in general, you're not going to get the units counted until they have occupancy permits. So a number of people have said, well, you know, with the Blaker Street project going on, how come we don't get safe harbor? And we can reject the project on very place? It's because we're only at 5.8%. And it goes by the date of the application of the developer. So even if this process takes six months and we hit it in six months, you go back to the date the developer applied for this. So we're at 5.8%. And we did some analysis. And if, if the 324 units on Blaker Street come to be, when they come to be, that would put our rate at 10.16 if you use the 2010 data from the census. The state is not using the 2010 data. They're in the process of updating it. They think it will be updated over the winter to use the 2020 census. If that happens, uh, we believe that obviously our population grew, which means our affordable housing level has to grow. So we're kind of chasing the rabbit there. But if that happens, I believe if we use the 2020 data, then we couldn't come up with the exact rate. But I would tell you it will be under the 10% because we have more population. But we'd be close. So that data is in the report. And then just, just briefly, again, as a reminder, this is 324 units. There are 122 one-bedroom, 172 bedroom and 32 three-bedroom. Under our 40B projects, it's required to have 10% of your units be three-bedroom. So you're going to see that with any project that comes in. You saw it tonight, you saw it with this one. So there is a schedule that, again, I apologize, I thought I had attached it. The schedule, right now, the Eastland is looking to pull their first permit in February of 2023. So in a few months. And then they would continue to pull permits every month between February 2023 up until January of 2024. So about a year when they would pull their last permit. It's a three-phase project, always has been. They pull permits for each building as they progress. So between February and February of next year and January of the following year, which is 11 months, they anticipate to pull all of the permits with full occupancy of all three phases in August of 2024. Now, the donation schedule, so again, they, they were not required to do this, but they built it right into the LIP application to the state. They are going to give us $50,000 each month that they pull a permit. So assuming that the schedule holds, they'll pull their first permit in February, we get $50,000. Every month from February to November brings us 10 months at $50,000. That brings us to our $500,000 total donation from that. So if this project can proceed on the schedule that they've given us a couple of weeks ago, then we would start getting the money in February and by November, we would have all $500,000. So what I attached herein is a revised, we call it a wish list for lack of a better word. It's a donation list and Mr. Carpenter will remember this because he's the only member of the board now that was here back in 2019 when we had this conversation. But we had identified some areas that we thought would be appropriate for the use of the donation that would benefit both the residents of the new development and residents in general in town. And the board didn't take any final action for this reason that we felt, let's wait and see when the project starts because our needs may change. And sure enough, here we are three years later and some of the needs we identified in 19 are no longer needs. Either we found another way to do it or, or that's mostly it. Mostly we found another way to do it. So we did have an internal meeting. We met with the school superintendent, we met with our department heads and we took another look at what we're going to recommend to the board. But I would preface it with this, I would suggest the board not vote immediately. Let's, I think you might want to wait and see if this project does actually start in February. Because if it's delayed another six months or another year for any reason, then your needs may change.
Parts may change.
So right now, our feeling is as it was when we came in 2019. The number one priority that we believe for that area would be roadway. We heard it tonight on, on the project that's proposed on Perion. The roadway reclamation or paving or things that may be needed, impacts that, that roads, those roads may take from the construction vehicles alone. You know, the road may need to be resurfaced, it may need to, may need some work. So we really feel that that should be a priority. It's for the residents of that area, it's for the residents of the new development. That figure in 19 was $150,000. And right now, when we're saying it's $300,000, if that work started next year, the figure could be $400,000. Road construction has more than doubled in one year, never mind in three years. We don't know what the engineering costs are, we don't know what the supplies are, we don't know what the labor costs are. It's work that has to be contracted out. So our recommendation is let's maybe use a figure of $300,000 to kind of give you an idea of what we're looking at, but that could be more. Now, if there's additional funding, this had been discussed previously, it's been discussed with the developer, they also were supportive of it. You might want to look at Goddard Park improvements. And we keep having to get additional funds like every other project because the costs keep going up. I, I think that's a project that benefits the entire community, whether you're a new resident to Blaker Street or you're a resident in the town who's been here for years. Goddard Park is everybody's park, it's everyone's downtown. You may want to consider that in addition to possibly putting money toward the summer concert series, which again is a great asset for residents who move here for their families. The Independence Day event, Memorial Day events, those are all things that benefit the entire community. So if there's money left over from roadway, it might be a consideration. I do want to point out one thing, two things that are not on here. Number one, the communications tower that was on here that was our number one priority. At this point, it's still our number one priority, but we don't think we should wait until November. So if, even if this project goes and that communications tower is needed, you wouldn't be able to start that until, go out to bit, at least until November. So at this point, I believe we're probably going to be coming back into you for a request from ARPA because we're in the process of getting some final quotes on that. That system also went from about 200, 250,000. My understanding could be 500,000 right now. And again, because of the costs over the three-year period. So rather than using entire donations for the communication system, we are going to come back to you for a request for ARPA. So for those who may not be aware of it, the communication system out in the western, west part of town is not good for police and fire. We need an additional communications tower, we need some additional receivers, we need a whole system because there's spotty communication. Now, if you're adding 320 units, you're adding more residents here, we need to service the residents that are already there in addition to the new residents. So we felt that was a priority. Police and fire are getting very concerned about it and feel it's a priority. So we're working on potentially another source rather than waiting another whole year or longer and coming back and saying, we still need this. It's been three years and we need it. The other thing is not on here are the day-to-day costs. Cause everyone says, well, this project, any of these projects, it's going to cost us because we're going to have more pupils, we're going to need more teachers, we're going to need more equipment, we need more staff. We may need another school. We may need another building inspector, maybe temporarily if it's a three-year project, two-year project. Maybe we won't move on, it depends on how smoothly the permit process goes. We may need a cork of the works, we may need fire safety. All of that would come out of additional revenues that come from taxation. So we didn't put it on as a donation wishlist because that's inherent to the project itself. You're doing a project, you're getting revenues from that project, those revenues should support the operational needs of the, of the town, which would be police, fire, DPW. But, so it's not that we haven't thought about it, but we weren't putting that as something under the donation. Under the donation, we were putting more of a one-time need that really could benefit that area than others. So anyway, that's my long update on the project. I know it's, a lot of you probably get asked by residents, what's going on? When is it going to start? How long is it going to take? We asked the same question. So Ed and I had a great meeting with the developer. And this is the report that he gave us, we worked through it. And I think at least gives us an idea of where the town is with regard to the donation, but most importantly, where they are with regard to the units coming online.
Okay. Excellent, thank you. Do we have any questions from the board members? Okay. And no votes needed there?
No, no votes needed, just wanted to get it on your radar screen to just start thinking about. Because if the donation dollars do start rolling in, you, you may want to think about it over the course of the next few months. But I, I guess I would advise, let's see what happens in February if the project starts.
Sure. Okay. All right, moving on to agenda item 6C, we have a request of the schools to locate $45,000 from ARPA for COVID fil, COVID air filters
Yes.
in these little white machines that we see down here.
The little white machines. So I, I do want to amend that request and lower the request. Joe Fahy, the director of facilities, first of all, it's, it's a, it's a school request because we're running the filters through the school department. So we get a better price because we buy in volume, but it's also for all of our town buildings. So these filters in these little white machines need to be replaced four times a year. So Joe trying to be proactive, we, we, we just replaced the filters in town hall at some of our town buildings. The schools are due to be replaced and they don't have the filters. And you also need bulbs, the bulbs only need to be replaced every two years. So initially, Joe had a quote from one vendor to provide two, and that's what was submitted to us. Over the last week, Joe said, I think I might. Over the last week, Joe said, I think I might be able to get a better price. Let me go out to a different vendor that's now available to us. Went out to a different vendor and got a reduced price for the filters. So the reduced price is now, it's twenty-nine thousand and change, so I would just round it to thirty thousand. That will provide us with, I believe, a full year's worth of filters for all the schools, all of the town properties and bulbs as well for two years. And then the filters alone, if you break it down, are about twelve thousand dollars. So in a year from now, you probably need another twelve thousand dollars to get more filters. You know, how long do these need to stay in place? I don't think we should plan four years out. I don't know that we need them, but right now we do need them, they're important. It's air circulation. Our systems here aren't good for air circulation. So we respectfully would request your approval of that. And again, I want to thank the school department again. We're lucky here, we have a great partnership with the school department and we're able to do some joint purchasing and some joint projects together because they're willing to work with us and they're helpful to us. So I want to thank them because they did a lot of work on this.
All right. Thank you. And do we have any questions? Board members, yes.
So when, when do we make a decision that it becomes operating costs? You know, like in two years, do we say, oh, it's going to be another two years? I just don't want to have to allocate money every year on this.
Agreed. I don't know how long we're going to have to keep them in place. We know for the next year, the school department wants to keep them in place. I don't know that they'll keep them in place two years from now. I don't know if they'll still be the public health need two years from now for that. We are looking at upgrades to some of our HVAC systems that we're coming in for to request. I think on the twenty-sixth, we were going to request, rather than money to actually do the upgrades on HVAC, we're going to request money for a study to see what exactly it is we need to do. So that study may come out that you don't need to have these anymore if you upgrade certain systems. So we don't want to go too long term on that, but I agree with you at a certain point and I've had that conversation. If it becomes something that we're going to have here forever, then it has to go in the operating budget. But right now, we think it's still a reflection of COVID.
And we really, there's four filters per year, but with the school being shut down a portion of the time, they can probably save on one.
Yeah, they could extend it a little bit for some of the, some of the classrooms. The machines run all twenty-four seven though. So the question is, I don't know how often if they can shut them down if people are still using the classrooms at a certain point. They're not effective if you turn them off.
Okay. All right. And do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the request for the forty, the thirty thousand?
Twenty-one.
Okay. Of ARPA funds for the COVID air filters.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So just to clarify, it's thirty, up to thirty?
Up to thirty.
Yeah. Because I think the quote that came in was twenty-eight and change and then there were shipping costs that we just estimated. We could get in under the thirty. So thank you. Appreciate it.
And we are moving to select board, select board member items. And eight A, discussion on potential creation of a student member of the board of select. Mr. Carpenter?
I don't have anything else. I did ask Sharon to send out additional information that I had found. So really just waiting to hear back from board members what your thoughts are, if this is something you want to go forward. That's fine. What ideas do you have? The likelihood is I will not be here when that person takes, takes their seat, but I'll be happy to see that that's something, a job well done. However, if the board has reservations and would like to continue to study it long after I'm gone, then that's obviously the board's choice.
Okay. Do we have any questions from the board members? Well, let me impose it this way. And Mr. Carpenter is looking for feedback. Do we have any feedback from Mr. Carpenter?
No. My biggest concern is I don't want to own this. I already volunteered for another committee, which I haven't stood up yet, so.
That, that's a fair point. Chair, Chairman Liberty, you can put a lot of things on who's outgoing and it's just hard for somebody to, you know, pick up that torch and keep it going. But at the same time, I think there is, you're not leaving tomorrow. So. Are we going to move this forward or do we want to table it further? I mean, I think, I think Mr. Carpenter really wants a decision made on this at some point soon. I said, I know we had some information that was provided to us in terms of work permits I needed. I think it was capped at three hours a week, which would be well within the parameters.
I find it valuable, so I'm just not going to volunteer someone else's time to take that one. I think anytime we can engage the youth, the young community, I think it's great.
I'm not looking for a committee to do this, I'm looking for ideas as to how you want it set up, essentially. I don't think we need a committee for this. I mean, I have my ideas, which I'm happy to share and then email to the board members. But again, this is going to be owned by you, not by me. So. And whoever comes after us, hopefully this will be a successful program. I'm happy to go to the school committee, ask them what their thoughts are. I think that's the next logical step if the board is okay with me doing that. I would happily contact Chair Harrington and ask to go in and just also would like their input in the process because they already have a process. And I would also like to hear their input as to whether they view this as valuable or not. Because I think we really need their buy-in to make this a successful program.
I would agree with that. I think that would be the next logical step would be to present to the school committee and within the parameters that we saw. I'm sure we can email, if you have, you want to send us your ideas that you have for how the structure would look. Then we could probably keep that as a talking point for next meeting. I don't believe you'd be able to get in front of school committee before next meeting. Possible, actually.
I meet on Wednesdays, but I didn't memorize their calendar. Okay.
All right. I think, is the board in agreement that we would start moving in that direction?
Yeah, I think it would be good.
So I would make a motion that the board allow me to go forward on that basis. That would be in the form of a motion.
I have a second.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. All right. And moving on to the final matter, we have to discuss and vote on a budget transfer of funds for the annual volunteer appreciation event. Again, Mr. Carpenter?
So this is, this is another ask. We have done this for most of my time on the board, but again, this is a brand new board. So the question, my first question is, does the board want to continue doing this? It does take time and coordination of town staff, their invitation sent out. We usually gather in this room. We ask the chair and the town manager, who depending on when we do it, might be the man in the tie. But hopefully, Mrs. Jacobson will have time to come back and visit with everybody if we move forward with a spring date. My thought was to take the money out of the selectman's salary account due to Mr. Libberty's vacancy and that vacancy not being filled. It just seems we've already appropriated to request town administration to go to the finance committee on our behalf and ask them to transfer eight hundred dollars to cover the expenses. So that's, so my initial question to the board is, do we want to go forward with this?
I can speak for myself in saying I'm not necessarily in support of this one only because we do the holiday event in which all, all of the town, you know, volunteers, all town employees are invited to that event. And I, it is my understanding, well, I know firsthand, Tristan had told me, it's a lot of work. And so I don't want to, I don't want to throw a lot more work on people's plates, very much with Mr. Chambers in terms of how stretched out, how stretched thin I am. So again, I think this would be duplicating efforts when we already have something in place. I mean, that's just my own, my own opinion on the matter. Do we have any other positions?
This request was for a budget, not our volunteer.
To put the money aside even to carry forward holding this.
Okay, so there's still the planning work involved.
Yeah. I can assure you, I can actually do it. I actually have everything on my computer. So it is, again, not an ask for anybody to, other than I would hope that all the board members would show up for that. Obviously, we have had issues where the chair has been out of town in previous years. So then Mrs. Roughly, we would hope would step in and breach and represent the board and be a welcoming presence as the town manager has done in the past. And Chair Goodrich did it multiple times during her time. So there's really no, there is work, which we will have to coordinate with both the chair and the town manager and the assistant town manager, as we don't know if we're going to hold it, but the timing of it. But it's, it's pretty much a turnkey thing as far as we are putting a burden on the staff to set up the room. It's not really very difficult for me to put, you know, coverings on tables and things like that. Another program, which is pretty basic. To be perfectly honest with you, it's just an opportunity for past and present members of boards to come who would not necessarily mix with each other on a given, on a given day. So, but again, I.
Do we know what an expected cost would be or are we just looking to spend the money?
My request would be eight hundred dollars.
Okay. Just.
Through the chair, is this well attended? Is it better attended than the holiday party?
It's, well, I wouldn't say that because the holiday party is open to the full-time staff and I would say that actually volunteers don't get to come to, some do. I mean, I've run into six or seven during the holiday party. But it's held during the day, which is appropriate and is always wonderful. If you have a chance, it's well worth taking some time off and working to come and get to do it. But yes, we've had, I don't know, I would say thirty, forty people at the outset. I mean, it's certainly not capacity room a hundred and fifty, but I would say we've had between twenty and thirty-five, I would say at any given time.
Would it be better to open up the holidays, like add the extra funds to the holiday party and open it up to volunteers? And then you're just one.
We do actually invite the board and commission members already to the holiday.
Okay.
Yep, they're invited.
Yeah, I know in the past I've been invited, but couldn't attend because of the time. I'm assuming Mr. Carpenter, I think in this one's after hours.
Yeah, this is always held in the evening. One, one Monday, it has been in the past, a Monday that we don't meet. So we don't wrap it into the meeting. So it's addition to not during. But.
Do we have a motion?
We'll make a motion that we transfer eight hundred dollars to fund that annual volunteer appreciation event. Mr. Carpenter?
Mr. Chairman, that authority lies with the finance committee? I would have to, the transfer would have to, so it would be a request to bring it to the finance.
I'll do a request. Town administration will bring it for us.
I guess the decision rests with the finance committee. If they do not approve the funds, then we wouldn't have the financial resources to consider this event.
Okay. So we move the transmission.
So I think there'd have to be, yeah, there'd have to be like a two-step process.
Okay.
If the board considers moving this forward to the finance committee.
Make a motion that we ask the finance committee to transfer eight hundred dollars to the fund for annual volunteer appreciation.
And.
Second.
We'll vote in this, motion in a second. Any further discussion on the matter? I'm going to go, I'm not going to roll call this, I am going to roll call this, excuse me. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Roughly?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes, it is a vote. And do we have any edits or concerns on the meeting minutes of August twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two? We'll accept them as written. Thank you, Sharon. And do I have a motion?
No move, that we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is a vote. Thanks, guys.